Okay, I'll call to order the City of Pacifica City Council meeting for April 9th, 2018. And let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember DeGree.
President.
Mayor Protem Vaterlas.
Here.
Mayor Keener.
Here. And now we'll have the salute to the flag led by Councilmember Deirdre Martin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the resolve of liberty, justice, and moral law.
Okay, do we have a closed session report?
No report of relaxation.
Thank you. So first off, we have a special presentation and it's for Volunteer Appreciation Week. And I have this proclamation to read. And so I'll read it. National Volunteer Appreciation Weeks, April 16th through the 22nd, 2018. Whereas the City of Pacifica recognizes that volunteers are the heart of our team. And whereas Pacifica Senior Services acknowledges that the provision of critical timely programs for aging and disabled residents would simply not be possible without our volunteers. And whereas volunteers on senior services team offer life sustaining services that enhance and maintain the quality of life for older adults and those with disabilities while promoting socialization, independence, and the capacity to live in this caring city. And whereas volunteers invest their time, talents, and treasure to raise funds to financially support programs and services for our citizens, enabling the City of Pacifica to maintain affordable program costs. And whereas Pacifica City Council and Pacifica Senior Services agree to recognize these team players for their many contributions, considerable accomplishments, and for the light they shine, which makes Pacifica a brighter place for all. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that April 16th through the 22nd, 2018 shall be National Volunteer Recognition Week in the City of Pacifica. Our volunteers are the heart of our team and their efforts sustain the compassionate community that is Pacifica done this ninth day of April 2018. Thank you. And do you wish to speak? Oh, Jim, yes. Jim Lang.
Jim Lang, Senior Services, City of Pacifica. And again, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Distinguished Council for recognizing our volunteers for all their efforts they do to make our community better. This year's theme is "Volunteers are the heart of our team," and that I assure you is very true with us. We could not do it without them. They do not miss a beat for us to do the array of services that we do. This year, on our recognition dinner, we're going to be recognizing over 150 individuals with nearly 900 cumulative years of service and honor for a little over 12,000 reported hours. They work more hours, but these are only the ones that are on the shifts. They do a lot of stuff they don't tell us about. But again, at the recognition dinner, we invite our city manager, mayor, council members, our PB and R commissioners to serve these volunteers to show appreciation on behalf of our community. Volunteers have increased this year our revenue in participation in facilitating 40 weekly classes and activities, increased rummage sales, increased the number of vendors in our gift shop. And just between those three efforts, they're going to make us $90,000 this year. And again, that helps us continue on with our other services without putting a financial burden to our city. Other services in this without revenue sources include seniors, our SASH program is shopping for seniors that are homebound. Also, we have our ARP tax service, which ended today. It started in February, first week of February, they ended today. They do it one Monday, every Monday, and they did 420 appointments and 275 tax returns. High Cap, Legal Aid, Wise &amp; Well, these are all monthly programs, all facilitated by volunteers. Our volunteers will be delivering 15,000 Meals on Wheels to homebound clients. We'll do 13,000 congregant lunch programs. And the public's greeted daily in our community center by a receptionist, again, trying to keep the friendly and helpful environment at the center. Volunteer efforts go beyond seniors. Again, they're serving the senior, but keep in mind there's a family member or a caregiver that might be at work or maybe out of the area. But just knowing that somebody's checking in on their loved one gives them that reassurance that they could go to work or be away, knowing that their loved one will get socialization or nutrition or that daily visit or in some cases a welfare check. And in some cases, these same volunteers are emergency responders in some situations. So a very valuable thing, which again, the outside person may not think of when you think of Meals on Wheels. Pacifica is a compassionate community and these team members are the varsity team. They demonstrate Pacifica is a caring community and seniors matter. These ambassadors to the city demonstrate compassion to help others that's making our community a caring place to live. In addition to our amazing senior volunteers, the Park Beach and Recreation Department is extremely fortunate for their dedicated youth-based programs. The Youth Advisory Board is an active fund, an educational group of young adults who plan and carry out great events for the community and learn leadership skills and local government while building life sustaining skillsets. During the summer, we have over 30 leaders in training education program. We call it our RISE program. And they'll contribute to a couple thousand hours assisting with our summer camp and special event programs during the summer. At Brink Pool, approximately 40 youth will be volunteering as swimmer age, contributing to over 1,000 hours assisting our staff with swim lessons. Other city departments in our city also use volunteers. Our police department, our public works. You were blessed with commissioners that care about whatever their interest is there along with our committee members, special committee members. Again, these team members contribute to very compassionate strategies. Community groups include Pacificans Care, Pacifica Resource Center, the Beach Coalition, Friends of the Library, youth sports coaches, scout leaders, school PTOs, and all of our service groups, compassionate people making teams stronger. To quote our new city manager, Kevin Woodhouse, on January 19th, 2018, in connect with Pacifica, he said, "Every week since I arrived in Pacifica in early October 2017, I am reminded and grateful for the passion and commitment to the Pacifica community shown by city employees, residents, volunteers throughout town, small business entrepreneurs, and others who are working tirelessly to make Pacifica a great community." To say a few words and receive the proclamation, there's two special people behind me that are very tireless in their volunteer efforts. Marge Ryan is our SIA chair. She'll speak first. And Lana Thompson, who by the way was a recipient last week as a Pacificans Care People Who Care Award. And she's also our rummage sale manager. So at this time, I'd like to present Marge Ryan.
Thank you. It's nice to see all of you again. And especially, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city manager for when they delivered meals about three weeks ago and we gave them an appreciation certificate for doing that. I think that's time, but I wanted the rest of you to know how important it was that they did that. The route that they went on and delivered the meal to the homebound, that was their first contact probably that day with anyone. And to think that the mayor and the city manager would take enough time to deliver meals to them and to say a few words to have made their day, they thought they were celebrities. So we thank you once again for doing that for us. And I don't think I can add any more to what Jim said or the way it should be done as the mayor said, that the City of Pacifica really, for 40,000 people approximately, they do have compassion and they do take care of everyone. So if you have a loved one or know someone who is housebound that needs food or needs transportation or something, please call the center. Someone will answer their call and your plea to help that person. Thank you.
I'm Lana Thompson. And Jim said that I'm in charge of the rummage sale. I prefer to be known as the queen of the rummage sale. On Thursday night, and nobody must decline or conjugate the following word, I was presented with this lei by the Pacifican Cares amongst other wonderful things. Please notice, it is still alive. Some of the bugs on my deck really enjoyed it as much as I did, and I just want to say thank you again. I want you all to think about rummage in a positive sense with a capital R. Because this past year, your rummage, my rummage, and our friends' rummage that was donated to us, or else I browbeat them into hauling it over, or else I mercilessly went and picked it up myself, made $40,000 for us. So rummage has a very great deal of worth to those of us who are in Pacifica. We do many other wonderful things too, but not everyone can turn $40,000 just like that for rummage. Thank you all for thinking of us and once again for allowing us to be here to thank you all personally.
Would you like to come up for a photograph?
Up there?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you can stay here.
Nope, we're coming down.
Is this enough?
This is just the front.
What's that?
He just wants a photo.
Yeah.
And in front of this?
Yeah.
Oh, in front of there, so they can take the picture.
Here we are.
I should stand in the back.
Fine.
It's such a great lighting.
I think you're supposed to go out and have a small, little bear possession.
See you here.
I might have cleaned.
Make sure you can see the camera. Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice weekend.
That's where you like?
I see you're handsome.
Oh, this is yes.
Sorry.
You were on the kitchen.
Let's see.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. And oops, sue, your light is on.
Oh, I just wanted to mention to the city manager that the queen of rummage is looking for extra space. So maybe one of the equalization basin mobiles might be available perhaps? The queen of rummage needs more space.
That's a lot of space.
They're working on the roofs.
That's heavy lifting.
Okay, the consent agenda. Any discussion? Deirdre?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay. Feel free.
I was just going to make the motion, so.
I'd like to make a comment on number six.
Oops. Okay. Just a comment. Okay.
Want me to do it now?
Yep.
So regarding item six, we are amending the, we're changing the requirements for the annual reporting for city commissions and committees. So we're having all of them come at one time to present. And I think they have also indicated that they like that because they can know what each one is doing and help to make whatever each commission is doing even stronger by knowing what the others are doing. And it also gives council a chance to have better comparisons of what's going on and perhaps change direction as needed.
Thank you. Deirdre?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as written.
Mike?
I'll second.
Okay, please vote. And that motion passes five to zero. All right. Next up is oral communications and for the public to comment on issues that are not on the agenda. And I have one card for a public speaker. It's Judy Hildreth. Is she here? Yes. Come on up. And she is followed by Anita Reese.
Thank you so much for your time, council and mayor. I'm a resident of Claridge Drive here in Pacifica. And the issue that I bring before you this evening is that we are having a problem with speeding on Claridge Drive to the point where we've had many instances and near misses. But in the last two weeks, we've had an accident with three vehicles. One of them was pushed up onto the sidewalk and an ambulance was required at the scene. We have asked over the last year for assistance with the problem and the repeated response that we get, and it would be me personally because I'm actually here representing the 600 portion of Claridge Drive. We didn't think that it was in the council's best interest or time to have all of us parade in here and say the same thing. So I'm here as a representative of the block. We have asked for speed bumps to be placed on several occasions and have been told that there are many reasons it's not happening. The biggest is that it would delay an emergency response should one be required on the block. The response that we gave back to them was, don't you think that it might actually prevent one? And here we are. A woman was walking her dog probably six months ago and walked around the corner. The dog was struck on the leash in the street as she was crossing. You cannot exit your vehicle on Claridge Drive without fearing that someone will come down the street at a high speed and possibly hit you. It is a paramount program. We don't want to be the residents who say, we wish something had been done. We would like to proactively prevent another problem. And our thoughts on this is that if we have speed bumps placed from the 600 portion to going north to Manor, that it in fact would slow down the traffic. We've asked for police presence and have been repeatedly told that the department is understaffed and cannot help us at the times of greatest travel, school times being in and out and then in the afternoon when they are on skyline. Captain Spanheimer has been very responsive in the last week. And after a year of requesting that the radar trailer be placed on Claridge Drive, it did appear on Thursday. It is not in the most appropriate place, but at least it did come. A petition is being circulated to prove that we do want this to happen. There are other ways to enter and exit the block if someone chose not to go over the bumps. So again, we are respectfully requesting that something be done before there is another injury, possibly one that will not have an outcome other than death. And it's property damage at this point that is always replaceable, but lives are not. And this is what we fear. We can't get out of our cars. We can't cross the street. My child, my adult, almost adult child is going to start driving. My biggest fear is that he's going to drive on Claridge Drive, not the freeway. Again, I thank you for your time and I do thank Captain Spanheimer for his response in the last week. And thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Anita Reese.
Hello, Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. So I just wanted to give you some updates. The inclement weather program, which is available to folks who are homeless at times of inclement weather can access additional shelter beds, will be ending on April 15th, so this Sunday. Along with that, the Dig in the Young Wheels trailer that comes to PRC is also ending. Our last day was today. We are still continuing to try to do outreach to Pacifica churches for the rotating shelter that I've mentioned before. Along, and the idea there is that in addition to space for folks to be inside, we are looking to find space outside at the same time. This is just to shore up some support for when the county does release requests for proposals to do a winter rotating shelter next winter. We're also wrapping up our tax services. Volunteers are scheduled through next Wednesday, even though the tax deadline is, I believe, Tuesday. All of our appointments are filled, but folks can still get and drop off their taxes. One of the cool things that happened this year is that so far, 40% of the folks who've done their taxes through us have saved something, at least $50, which is a great and significant increase from past years. We're also in the process of doing our, we just launched our Mother's Day fundraiser. So I have flyers that I'll share with you all, but this is it. For a gift of $40 or more, we'll send your mother or any other person you want to send a Mother's Day card to. We ask that requests come in by May 3rd, which is a Thursday. We also have memorial cards for folks whose families have passed and you can send that off to anybody you choose. Cards will still be available after the May 3rd deadline, but there may be a delay in getting things out. So the card was designed by a local designer. The photo was donated as well. And the hand addressing will be done by somebody local as well. So one of the key things about our Mother's Day card is that it's always as local as we can make it. is that it's always as local as we can make it. The other thing that I wanted to share, since I have a few minutes, is, or seconds, is just the support that the city and all of our other resources, including our Mother's Day fundraiser, helps us to provide support to all Pacificans. So I'm gonna read you a story about one of the folks that we serve. So Bob, which has changed name, is a senior living in Pacifica on a fixed income. He served in Vietnam, straight out of high school. He contacted PRC to get help with his power bill. After several conversations over the phone, our case manager built trust with him, and he came in for assistance. It was clear he was not looking for handouts, and said that several times, and did not want anything to do with Veterans Affairs. He came back from the war feeling vilified and stopped sharing that he was with, was a Vietnam vet. But in the end, we were able to connect him to the VA. And now he's in the process of getting full medical coverage and a pension.
Thank you, Anita. Okay, that's all the cards I have. And seeing nobody else, I'll move on. Council Communications. Deirdre Martin.
For those that didn't know, Michael Moran, who was our rec coordinator for PBNR, moved on to another city close by. But I just wanted to wish him well. I think he did a great job with our Parks and Rec Department and brought a lot of really neat, new, innovative programs to the program. And I, we will miss him, but wish him the best. His last event was Easter Egg Hunt, which I attended up at Fairmount Park with my two-year-old. And we had a really great time. They added a new photo booth this year, which we had a lot of fun putting on the different sunglasses and whatnot. So thanks to Michael Moran and to PBNR for putting out such a great event every year. I also went on a tour of the Equalization Basin to see how the progress there. We got a little presentation from the project manager ahead of time, and it was really a sight to see. I likened it to kind of a child's dream, just to sit and watch those excavators load each other up and then haul away, you know, a bunch of earth. And it was really neat. And so there's a lot of really good work going on there. And we appreciate everyone's patience at the community center, at the skate park, all the neighbors, the NOISE, and all the, you know, community members that are driving by during those peak hours. So it's good work going on. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. The Parks, Beaches and Rec is also accepting application for their Youth Advisory Board, which Jim Lang had mentioned, which is a really great group of kids, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th graders that do a lot of volunteer work around town on such events like the Easter Egg Hunt. And they do a lot of local outreach. And I'm actively recruiting for that group. And it's really neat if you have any kids or neighbors. It's gonna look really good on their college resumes. And it's fun. Also wanted to alert everyone, there's a climate change, I guess, talk, if you will, at the Sanchez Library next Tuesday at 6:30. Supervisor Dave Pine's gonna be there. And basically, you're just gonna be talking about how climate change is going to be affecting us and what we can do as a community. So I think it should be a pretty interesting discussion. And then lastly, I say it every, every other, every second and fourth Monday. Earth Day is coming up. So we're always actively recruiting for Earth Day volunteers. If you don't have a site, get one. There's going to be the Author of Garbology, which is the book-to-action event that the libraries are doing with the Beach Coalition. So all, you read the book. And then there's a whole bunch of newsletters that are coming out. And you can kind of relate all this. And we'll culminate at our Earth Day of Action on April 21st. The Eco Fest is from 11:00 to 2:30 down at Lindemar Beach. And we're expecting about 3,000 to 4,000 people. So just be aware, parking, and be patient. Traffic may be an issue. But for those that are going, there is free parking over at Cabrillo School. There's also a shuttle that we'll be running. And that shuttle runs from 10:30 to 3:00. Thank the city for being a part of that. And we've also got a really great band, Frankie and the Pool Boys, will be there, as well as the Flying Salvias, which I think a lot of local folks are aware of. There's also gonna be a talk by Rob Calo from the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve, which I think a lot of you are familiar with. So come on down. It's gonna be a really great event. And if you're looking for a site, please feel free to reach out. And we'll get you, we'll get you a site to volunteer at. Unless you have a site that you'd like beautified, we will get you a team. That's all I have.
Thank you, Deirdre. Sue Vallos.
Since the last meeting, I attended several events. The Water Summit was attended by about 400 people, including several people on our Sea Level Rise Committee. We learned about projects throughout the county regarding floods, droughts, sea level rise, and more. And they will continue those programs. We are changing our water committee from the City and County Association of Governments. And we're gonna continue as a grant committee, hopefully, to work together throughout the county to get additional funding. I also toured the Equalization Basin. I was amazed at the size of the Equalization Basin. When you're standing up there looking down and the people look like miniatures. It was amazing. And I think one day it will win an award for its design and ingenuity. I went to the Pacificans Care Night of Appreciation, where the fault, where they acknowledged the commitment to our community. And they gave awards to Mary Brum Merrill, Horace and Marion Henshaw, and Lana Thompson, who was here earlier. It was a very well-attended event also. On Saturday, I went to the opening of the new Pedro Point Brewing Company on Bill Drague Way. That was amazing. There were so many people in there that people were spilling out onto the street. And it's really great to see new businesses so packed. It was, you couldn't even go inside. It was so busy. I went to the Easter Egg Hunt, too, and missed it because there were so many people there. I couldn't find a place to park. And by the time I got in, it was done. But the kids were all happy, all happy. I also went to the annual Jack Cheese Contest, which is for the Historical Society. And every item of food that they had that you could sample was made with Jack Cheese. Amazing that you can make whipped cream with Jack Cheese. Delicious, all of it. And also, this is a personal thing, but just as I would like people to slow down when they're driving, every single day when I drive around in Pacifica, I see people go through stop signs. And I don't mean roll through stop signs. I mean drive through stop signs. The sign says stop. So if everyone, please, could pay attention to the fact that there are stop signs and speed limits in Pacifica, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Sue DeGry.
I attended some of those wonderful events as well. Easter, our PBNR does a wonderful job. It looked like it was gonna be overcast on that Saturday, the 7th, I believe it was. And it was a great event. The Equalization Basin was huge. I tend to have a little height issue. So I had to hang on to our finance director and not go too far, just listen well. But I must say, the work they were doing there was very, being very well done. Everybody was very polite, very efficient, I would say. Working very nicely and very efficiently. The Pacifica Care Awards was excellent. The cheese, I got there later at the cheese event and didn't get a bite of cheese at all. But I think that Pacifica cheese is actually addictive because I don't like cheese. But I, on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, I try to go to the Historical Museum to find some. So there's something going on there. I went that Saturday, so that's why I was late for getting to the cheese thing. So you had the Clean Money Conference. And one of the churches in Redwood City was very well-attended. The public input that has been going on for the last year has actually gotten, and I can't remember the bill, but Kevin Mullen carried it. But it's been worked upon by several legislators. And that's to make sure that you, the public, know who the top three donators to any candidate. And so the next one is going to also, for petitions and for initiatives, is to be able to have everybody that's donating money, contributing money, they have to present the first three. So your, the next bill will be that for the initiatives, you get a sheet of paper that tells who the three top funders are for that initiative. And then you actually, they have to give you a paper where you sign that you actually saw those first three and you're okay with donating. So the momentum is really quite fantastic, so. The Water Summit was excellent. A lot of energy and a lot of knowledge, and very well-attended. So that will be to our benefit. The San Francisco Airport, we met and we did choose to join the NOISE, which is the National Office of Noise Protection. So that enables us, as a San Francisco roundtable, to connect with very active lobbyists from the National League of Cities, for one, for example. And so I'm looking forward to a little bit more of that. The problem with the NOISE from the airport, and you've seen Palo Alto on the news and you've seen the rest of us in the paper, et cetera, it's still, the problem has not gone away until Congress does something about the mandates. The mandate from Congress, is where the power comes, is to the FAA. And the top two priorities are safety, yay, and efficiency, which means fuel and time. So fuel and time efficiency are trumping noise. And so that's where public, the public voice is gonna be really needed to get the Congress to actually change the mandate. So we're all working on that. And I think we'll be hearing more in different ways of doing it. But that's pretty much where it's stuck. Hey, that's it.
Thank you, Sue. Mike, Mike O'Neil.
I pretty much was where everybody else was, except I missed the cheese and the Easter Egg Hunt. So, but I was everywhere else.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, so I took the Equalization Basin tour. And I was at the Water Summit. And one thing about the Water Summit, at the end of it, Jackie Spear gave a speech by video from Washington. And what she said basically was, you've got to come together as a county. And that way, you'll be a far more effective lobby than you will individually, as individual cities. And so I think that was sort of one of the themes that was introduced. And, you know, it will come up in discussion, I believe, in the water committee that Sue Vallos serves on. And I also attended the Harvest Baskets. This is a monthly food giveaway put on by the Pacifica Resource Center at the American Legion Hall. And usually, we have a lot of legionnaires that help us out, a lot of other folks from the community. Most of them are my age or older. This time, we were real shorthanded. And I think it was just a one-time thing. So I don't think it's time to send out the alarms yet. But, but, you know, next month, let's, let's try to have the full complement of folks show up. This month, I think it was probably something to do with Easter Vacation or something like that, and school schedules or whatever. But. What's that? It's the Fourth Wednesday. Fourth Wednesday, 2:00. 2:00 to 2:30. Yeah.
Oh, it's 3:30.
Younger folks, too.
Yes, we can, we can use some younger folks. Yeah, I, I got very tired this last time. But I survived. And so with that, let's move on to staff communications. Kevin.
Great, thank you, Mayor Keener, council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I have several updates I'd like to provide. And then I'd like to end with an introduction of our new Economic Development Manager, Thomas Myers. And I'll say some words and then have him come up to the podium for a brief moment. So I'm excited that Thomas has joined us today. It's his first day. But first, a few other updates. Today actually marks my six-month mark as city manager here. So I'm pleased to achieve that. The Equalization Basin Tour was mentioned that you all attended. And I wanted to put that in context of the storms that we recently had on Friday and into Saturday morning. Significant rainfall. We had four members of crew working overnight to cover the entire city that night. So accolades go out to them turning the pump on at Clarendon and Lakeside early in the morning and removing broken tree branches, et cetera. But we did have a sanitary sewer overflow at Lindemar. And, you know, that caused, it was a minor one, but that caused, you know, beach closure. And we're doing the testing and self-reporting as required. But that's precisely the storm event that the Equalization Basin will prevent in the future. And so everyone has seen in the public the big cranes and the construction going on and next to the community center. And we're gonna be working to put together a new update fact sheet and information flyer once we work through some scheduling details and status of the project, just to push that out. Because as several council members mentioned, it really is a dramatic and innovative project that is, is gonna be a huge and hidden piece of infrastructure in Pacifica. But it's probably gonna be an award-winning Public Works project. So we're excited about that and we'll, we'll help promote that. I did wanna mention that in human resources for the city, we're very busy. We actually have eight different full-time recruitments underway currently. And it, and it's the time of year where we have a lot of part-time position recruitments occurring, too. So we have, you know, at least seven of the part-time recruitments occurring. So, and we always push out those, those job announcements in all of our, on the website and Connect With Pacifica, et cetera. Another recent and important announcement was, going back in December, remember, we received a presentation about the Special Needs Registry from the police chief. And the police department recently put out the press release launching the Special Needs Registry. And if I could, I'd just like to take a moment and read this description and point to the contact, mainly for members of the public so that they know where to find the information. But it's that, "The Pacifica Police Department's Special Needs Registry is a tool that allows us to better serve our community members with special needs. It will allow our officers quick access to information that will enable them to better assist that person during any contact, if they become lost, found, or when they need assistance." Parents and care. Excuse me. "Parents and care providers are able to enroll a person of any age with any medical, mental health condition or disability, including but not limited to Alzheimer's disease, dementia, bipolar, autism, Down's, epilepsy. This registry will contain a photograph, physical description, and emergency contact information for the person. It will also include information needed to find those who wander away from home and help identify found individuals. Important information about medical, safety, and behavioral concerns will also be readily available to officers through the registry. Helpful suggestions for interacting with a person having a disability or medical condition may also be provided." So it's a volunteer registry. And the registration form can be found on the Pacifica Police Department's website. Or if you have questions about it or just, yeah, wanna, wanna be pointed to that source via email, you can email specialneedsregistry@pacificalis.org. Finally, I will introduce Thomas Myers. Thomas started work today. And he comes to us with extensive economic development experience with the city of Los Angeles, the city of Berkeley, as well as work with the economic and workforce development for the city and county of San Francisco. In addition to that experience, he comes to us with an economics degree from Stanford. In addition to that experience, he comes to us with an economics degree from Stanford University, an MBA from UCLA, and a JD from UCLA. I know he's very excited to begin work here. He has specific interest in small businesses, retaining neighborhoods, serving businesses, local employment for Pacifica residents, and the expansion of the relationship between the business community and the residents who support them. He enjoys working in this public setting with elected officials and the boards and commissions and city staff in the implementation of all these projects and programs in implementing the Economic Development Plan. And more specifically, some kind of signature projects that he led was in Berkeley, the Berkeley Bowl Grocery Store and the Adeline Business Corridor Street Improvements. Those were both very complex projects. And in Los Angeles, funding for freeway service patrol project for the I-10 and I-110 corridors. So with that introduction, I'd like to welcome Thomas and say a few words, if you'd like.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and to Mayor and Council and to staff. Very excited to be working here in the city of Pacifica. Look forward to working with all of you on your programs, projects, implementation of the Economic Development Plan, working with staff and with the business community and residents of the city of Pacifica. And ready to get started.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome.
If there are questions, you know where to find me.
Thank you.
And that completes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Next on our agenda is a public hearing and the subject is an appeal of Planning Commission approval of a site development permit to construct about a 1,700 square foot, two-story addition to an existing two-story, single-family residence, patio area, a deck, an uncovered parking area, et cetera, at 674 Corona Drive. And...
Wait, before we go on...
Yes.
I am a Realtor and I have listed the property directly across the street from this property, so I've decided that the best thing would be to recuse myself for this hearing, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
My name's Tina Wermeister, I'm the Planning Director. And as the mayor mentioned, the project at 674 Corona Drive includes an approximately 1,700 square foot, two-story addition to an existing 3,500 square foot, two-story, single-family residence and a new uncovered parking area in the northeast corner of the property. On February 5th, the Planning Commission conditionally approved a use permit, site development permit, and variance for the proposed project. And with me here, as the Planning Commission liaison, is Chair John Niblin.
Good evening.
And he'll be available to answer any questions that the council may have about the commission's deliberations. On February 13th, an appeal of the Planning Commission action was filed stating four contentions with the Planning Commission's approval, including concerns regarding pedestrian safety, stormwater drainage, dirt stockpiles, and obstacles in the right-of-way during construction. Regarding pedestrian safety, the appellant is concerned that lack of sidewalks in the area and no streetlight at the end of the public right-of-way may place pedestrians at risk as a result of more vehicular activity due to the new parking area. However, a condition of approval from the Planning Commission's action requires a new sidewalk along the property frontage of 674 Corona. With the addition of a sidewalk and the limited number of anticipated vehicle trips, staff feels that there is relatively little potential risk to pedestrians. However, since there is no city standard for street lighting, a suggested condition of approval was provided on packet page 96 in the event the council believes that the project would require installation of a new streetlight. Regarding storm drainage, the appellant is concerned with water flowing from the new parking area down the hill and onto neighboring property, the appellant's property. A condition of approval was added in response to the appellant's concern, which would require the applicant to incorporate additional drainage features to collect any storm water not absorbed into the previous pavers of the parking area and direct it to the storm drain system. The appellant's remaining two concerns about dirt stockpiles and obstacles in the road during construction were researched and staff found that the existing dirt mounds on the applicant's property will be utilized during construction of the project. And an existing condition of approval from the Planning Commission's action would address the appellant's concerns regarding blocking or hazards in the right-of-way. Specifically, condition number 14 on packet page 115 states that roadways should remain clear. Staff finds that the concerns that the appellant raised in their appeal do not identify any new information or issues which would result in staff changing its recommendations for the project. Therefore, we're recommending that the city council deny the appeal and uphold approval of the proposed project.
Thank you, Tina. Any questions from council? Yes, Mike O'Neil.
I wanted to ask, in the staff report from planning, they addressed, it seemed like they addressed line by line each of the things mentioned in the appeal, except one, and that is the second issue is the buyback portion of what we paid to have the improvements made. That wasn't addressed in the staff report.
So can you state which, what was the...
Under the email from the repellent, appellant, Ms. Garcia, there's a, it brings up, the second issue is the buyback for a portion of what we paid to have the improvements made. So, you know, from that fire turnaround to the house, it looks like that's new pavement in good shape, so, you know, we didn't do it, okay? So, but that is, they want, it sounds to me from their appeal that they want a portion of what they had to pay to put that in. If it is public right-of-way, they want to be reimbursed by this guy, who will be using it to get to the driveway. So it wasn't addressed in your narrative in the staff report.
Right. I believe we addressed the actual appeal form that was sent in and you may have pulled that from, it sounds like an email.
Yeah, that was an email that I think was from the day, the approximate, the next day, but I don't think that was part and parcel, it was actually included in the appeal itself.
But I can address the question and I can ask Public Works representative to come up also. My understanding is that there were more than just road right-of-way improvements needed in the area to serve parcels. And one of them was drainage improvements to redirect the drainage that was causing those erosional gullies in the area. So that the original builders of 674 Corona, which is not the current applicant, had to put in significant investment into the storm drainage system. And therefore, that was their investment into the public infrastructure into the area. And so they were not required to build part of the street. And I think perhaps the Public Works staff could probably explain that even better than I could, a lot better than I could.
650 is the house at the end of this really long driveway, part of which is public right-of-way, part of which is private property, right? And my understanding is the current applicant is going to drive on the street up to the property line and then go to a driveway that they're constructing, correct?
Right.
Okay. So my, from what I'm reading in this, the email that was, that we received as part of the packet, they want to be reimbursed for the public right-of-way that they constructed in order to get to their private driveway. So it's maybe 50, 75 feet, I have no idea how much. But, so what you're saying is that the guy 650, which is the one at the bottom of the hill, put a lot of the infrastructure, because there is a lot of gullies there for drainage and water flow, et cetera, but the road goes over that.
The 674 Corona original builder put in the drainage infrastructure.
That's what confused me, because I thought, I understood you to say it was 650 and I couldn't see why 650 would need to do it.
I apologize if I said that. I meant to say 674.
Okay, I may have misunderstood you, too. Okay, so, but needless to say, he put in the roadway then, 674, but 674, from when he talked to me this afternoon, he, I did talk to both the 650 and 674. 674 said that he did the improvements and he constructed the house and all of that, correct?
So, so just to, so the house at the very end of the street on the long driveway is 650.
That's right.
They extended the road in the right-of-way because they needed to access their driveway, their property. 674 was originally built in like the late 90s, I believe, early 2000s. They were the ones who put in drainage improvements over and above what was needed just for their property.
Okay, Vance there.
Yeah, so what, Vino Campo, Director of Public Works. So in addition to what Director Wermeister is explaining, so the project at 674 actually put in a lot of improvements, including a sidewalk partially within their frontage. They extended the road, they put in a hammerhead for emergency vehicle turnaround. And like what Tina mentioned, that they also put in a drainage improvement about 700 linear feet all the way along the street. Those are the improvements that were placed by 674. And the improvements that was put in by 650 basically took it from the end of the hammerhead and extended it to their driveway.
Right, that's, okay, but what I think the appellant is asking is they, 650, the one at the end of the road, put in that public right-of-way and their private road. But that if 674, the applicant, is going to be using that road, public right-of-way, to access their driveway, they state in the email that they need to have an agreement and they want to be reimbursed some portion of what they did and built for public right-of-way.
So the improvements that were installed by 650, that's the property in the end, they were born up a condition of approval that was, you know, put into as part of the development of that project. We did research, we even looked at the files from when the original construction of 674 was done, and there were no mention of any buybacks, nothing at all, that no agreements were established, nothing of any mention that they will receive a buyback for that.
So maybe I can add some clarity as well. In order for the appellant to have been reimbursed for those improvements, that reimbursement request would have had to have been put into their conditions of approval in order to bind any future neighboring property owners. And that was not done. And there was no agreement between the city and the appellant at the time to get reimbursement for those costs.
But 650 was built after 674, correct?
Correct. But we can only impose conditions on 650 that are due to their own burden, their own impacts that they created based on their development. They did not create an impact that would require them to reimburse for that right-of-way because that right-of-way already existed. The only way to get reimbursement was to have that condition put into, an understanding put into the conditions of approval at the time that 674 was developed, and that did not occur.
Okay, but 674 was built before 650?
Correct.
So 650 was not there to ask to enter into the agreement?
No, but what is commonly done, if in fact, an applicant creates infrastructure or oversizes infrastructure or constructs right-of-way that helps service future development, then at the time that they construct or get their permit, there is a condition that's put into the permit that says that in the event, at some future date, the developer of parcel B develops, that developer will be required to reimburse that 674 applicant for the cost, their per-ata share of the cost for that right-of-way. That did not occur. And because that did not occur, there is no legal mechanism to require that reimbursement at this time.
Okay, so then it could not be, we could not, we would in essence be going backwards in, we would be going backwards to have 650 tell 674 to pay the money, right?
We have no legal mechanism to require 650 to reimburse the property at 674 for the right-of-way.
Well, they're asking for the reverse, for 674 to reimburse 650.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Because 674 is using street, that is public street, to get to their driveway.
Correct.
Okay.
I misspoke.
So there's a legal mechanism, unless it was a deed restriction or approval, conditional approval, to have that done.
Correct.
Thought I wanted to ask.
Can I ask an additional question here? So what was the extent of the public right-of-way that was originally in place for 674 before 650 was constructed?
The extent, the extent of the improvements include the hammerhead, placing the hammerhead, portion of the sidewalk all the way to the driveway that was proposed at that time. They did paving also of the street, they extended the street. And in addition to that, like what Tina had mentioned, there were like 600, I mean 700 linear feet of storm drainage that was put in by the original construction of 674 to address the runoff that is a big concern, given the hilly nature of the site.
So my reading of the maps is that the residents of 674, irrespective of any buyback, would have no reason to use any of the new narrower right-of-way that was constructed by 650. Is that correct?
That is correct. So when 650 was developed, the extension of the road that was put in was the narrowest, the minimum that is required. And there were no sidewalks that were imposed, although there was already a complete street policy at that time. And like what I said, it just barely meets the minimum required for a way of, for public safety, emergency vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council or from staff? Mike?
Now, per what the owners told me this afternoon, is if 674 put in all the culverts and the drainage improvements, it empties into, I guess, the lot for 650. Okay, can you explain to me how the water's going to work? Because there was a lot of drainage gullies there.
Yeah. And the drainage improvement that was installed by the original construction of 674 extended that drain, I mean, the storm drain system down 700 feet along Corona and tying it into an existing system. So it's not like it's discharging onto the hillside, no.
Okay, and then 650 did that?
No, 674, as part of the original construction in the early 2000s.
Okay, and then 650, when they got built, did you happen to look to see what, where did they tie in there? They told me that it also goes into the public sewer system, storm system.
So basically, the development at 650... So, so basically, the development at 650 benefits from the extension that was done, the storm drains improvement that was done by 674.
Okay.
Including the, the presence of, you know, the hammerhead for emergency vehicle.
Right.
Sue DeGree.
So, I find it very confusing trying to, so I had pretty much the same questions that my councilmember O'Neil had regarding the buyback and things like that. If we're taking comments, I do feel that a light would be helpful up there, because I'm just thinking of people going up there just to look at the scenery at night and go right over the cliff. So if I'm understanding correctly where 674 is, so the, what you call the fire one, the bulb out or whatever? The home is-
That's the fire turnaround. It's an emergency vehicle turnaround, that's what it is.
Right, and the house we're talking about is to the, if you're looking at the fire thing that goes like this, it's to the right, correct? The big house to the right.
If you were to look at the, it's like a T intersection, so the 650 is beyond the, the turnaround that you're-
No, I'm not talking about 650, I'm talking about 674. So if I'm looking at the front door of 674, the, the driveway they want to make is to the right, is that correct?
Yes, further, yeah. Now, you're talking about the proposed, one that's being proposed right now, yes. But if you, because I, I had, I thought you're talking about what was existing, I mean-
Oh, so I'm looking at that, and I didn't get out of my car, but it just looks like there's a pretty steep drop. And so I, I, I'm not too good with cubic feet and all that stuff, so they are gonna be using some dirt and retaining walls to make a platform, shall we say, or to put, to put dirt under there. It looks like there is no land there, or very little land, because there was a fence. I, I didn't go over the fence.
It does, it does have quite a bit of topography on it, and I think when we get to public comments, the applicant's engineers here can explain more about the construction technique.
So there, are you telling me that there is land back behind that fence?
Yes.
It doesn't look like there's land there.
It drops off, but there's land back there.
Okay. But that's what I'm trying to, so you're, you're, you know, it drops off, but so you'll get to that and explain to me how they're gonna bring it up so that you can put a vehicle in there, or two vehicles, right? So the other question I had, so I went down to Alta Vista to see, because I'm concerned also about the runoff. So it sounds like the, the basin, and it sounds like it's an old basin, so they're shuffling off the water this direction, and I'm concerned about the water going straight down to Alta Vista. How do you stop that? Because it says on the big maps here, there's a, a flow, and just, I'm not very good with maps, but there's this wide open spaces on the map and a flow, and the line just goes straight down towards Alta Vista. So that's, I'm concerned that the people down at Alta Vista have no idea what's going on, what, what these conversations are. And then I went roaming around, looking and taking pictures of the soil, and there's some pretty dramatic, like a huge tree stump is on its side, so I'm kind of concerned about the residents down on Alta Vista. And what else did I have? Oh, and then the other thing regarding HPD, there was some mention of HPD, I just want to make sure that Hillside Preservation District, we've always been very careful about the Hillside Preservation District, want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, that we're not, we're not bypassing or diluting our concern about that.
Correct, it's not, it's not in the HPD district.
All right, thanks.
What's that? Just a minute. Are you preparing to make a comment, Van?
The answer to councilmember DeGree's comments can be, like what Director Wermeister mentioned, can be addressed by the applicant at the time of, of whatever the, the appellant would mention.
Okay.
Thanks.
If there's nothing further, we'll now hear from the appellant, and Michelle Garcia, right? And you have ten minutes.
I'm Michelle Garcia, live at 650 Corona. And first I want to state that when we came to the planning commission, we clearly stated that we were not against this project, we just had some concerns. It was a very long night, that night, and our concerns were not addressed. And we were asked, or, then I sent my email, because I felt that we spoke of the sidewalk, the drainage, but no one really spoke to us about it, no one showed us anything, nobody explained to us that it was all taken care of. And then I had to file an appeal, and I paid three hundred and fifty dollars for that appeal, and now when I read the documentation, a lot of our concerns have been addressed. So, first of all, I'd like to know why our concerns couldn't, couldn't have been addressed that night, which probably would have eliminated this meeting. So there's my first statement. The second is regarding the buyback, during our planning commission meeting, and it's on video, back in, just a few years back, we asked about the buyback. And they, it was told to us that that was something that could happen, but no one ever stated that we needed an agreement, nobody ever stated that we had to file anything at the time. So again, I'm standing here tonight thinking, okay, well, it was brought up in the planning commission meeting, because we had to go back to the planning commission regarding the right-of-way. We talked about it because there are other parcels that would be using the right-of-way, and when that was gonna happen, then the buybacks could be addressed. Nobody said we had to file an agreement. So, I have an issue with that, and perhaps we can sidebar that, or we can address it tonight, or we can come back here and discuss that at a later time. Again, we are not looking to stop this project, but we spent an enormous amount of money putting in that right-of-way and the drainage. We put in the drainage, 650 put in the drainage to the right-of-way, we had to put in the streets, we had to put in the curbs, we had to put it all in. So, when they're saying 674 put it in back in nineteen ninety-nine or nineteen ninety-eight when that house was built, they may have put in some drainage, but they did not put in the drainage that's currently there, that has now stopped the water from going down onto Alta Vista. And we have our neighbors down from Alta Vista here this evening to speak, because they had an enormous amount of water under their house, and we have stopped that from happening. So our concern is, is are you gonna bring this parking structure up to grade, up to this, to the grade that we put in, so that that drainage is properly done? Because the problem is, is our property line off of this new addition in parking structure, that's our property. So not only is the water gonna go down onto our property, but it could go down onto the property of the house below us on Alta Vista. So there is a big concern, because that's a slide area. And when we had to put in the infrastructure for that right-of-way, there was, we were held to a very high standard to make sure that not only were things not gonna slide, but the heritage tree wasn't gonna be taken down. And if you look in the original planning commission presentation back in February, there are no sidewalks in those pictures. None of those things were addressed that night, and they weren't presented that night. And now they're being said that it's gonna be done. So, what we want to know is, is is there gonna be safety for us to get to and from our home? Is the drainage going to be as one hundred percent as it is now? Because as I'm looking at this paperwork, from the planning commission to now, things don't match. If you take both meetings and both things, it's not lining up. So how do we know that this stuff's really gonna happen? Because at the end of the day, that's the only way we have to get into our home. So we need to know that there's gonna be some kind of safety when we're walking our dogs or people are coming to our home, that there is a safe place to walk, because that driveway literally comes up to the property line. It's not like they're starting it at the end where the hammerhead is, they're coming all the way to the property line to turn into this parking structure. So, there's gonna be a lot more traffic. It's becoming a multi-dwelling home. Seventeen hundred square feet addition is an additional home. That's bigger than a Lindemar Rancher. So there's gonna be a lot more traffic, and we're fine with that, but we just want to make sure that we're safe, coming to and from our home, able to get in and out. When the dirt was dumped, I don't know if a grading permit means that you take dirt from your property and move it, but that dirt was dumped there. There was garbage in that dirt, that dirt has been there since May. It's ugly, we built a beautiful home, and that's what we look out every day when we come out of our home. It was dumped there. Yes, there's stuff holding it up, but that's a slide area. And if that slides, it slides down onto our property and to the house on Alta Vista. So, again, you know, we had to, 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 to work on specific guidelines and rules. And I think that those need to be addressed here so that we're safe. They were addressed to us so that we, we were doing things right and that it would be safe for everybody. Well, that's what we're asking for. So, I'm, I'm a little taken back that it seems to be presented to the council that I'm bringing up issues that were already addressed, because they weren't addressed at the planning commission meeting. We literally left here after sitting here for three hours, because the applicants before us took three hours, and I think we were here twenty minutes. So, I'm glad that you are going to address the issues, that's great, but we need to know for sure that it's gonna happen, because it seems like a lot of misinformation, and I need to make sure that the drainage is gonna be done properly, is it gonna be brought up to grade? And if it's not, how much water's actually gonna go down? How much water is gonna head down the hill? That's what I need to know. Because it's gonna land on my property, and then it's gonna land in my neighbor's property, and then who's responsible for that? Who's liable for that? I'm not gonna be liable for that, because we spent the money to put in the proper drainage and the right-of-way, and that water flows beautifully. I have video of it, I posted pictures. The amount of water that comes off those hills is enormous. And lately, our rains have been all or nothing. So, I appreciate your time, I'm kind of taken back that I even have to be here knowing that this probably could have been addressed. I hope the buyback situation is not a closed subject, because I feel that I was not directed back when we had our planning commission on how to handle that, and I don't think that that's fair. I think that Planning Commissioner Evans clearly stated that in, at the meeting, that we were already paying more than our fair share. And I, I agree with him, we paid more than our fair share. And if 674 is now gonna use a portion that they should have, their, their conditions of approval was that they were supposed to put in that right-of-way back in nineteen ninety-eight. This documentation that the city has, I have it, I have submitted it. They were supposed to complete that, but because they had already done so much, somebody decided that that condition of approval didn't stand. And so then we were responsible for it. And we didn't really have a choice, because we needed to put it in. So you're saying that I don't get a buyback, but they didn't actually have to put in what they were supposed to? So maybe that's why that condition wasn't set in when 674 built the house, because they never had to improve it. So why would something be put in that they would have to, that we would get some kind of buyback? Because they weren't held accountable to do what they were supposed to do. So, I thank you for your time, and I hope that you will consider all of these facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the appellant?
I have a question.
Okay, Sue.
The video you were referring to, were there two separate videos? One on February second, two thousand eighteen, and one prior to that?
Yeah, the, the, our, we had, we came back to the planning commission regarding the right-of-way, because there was some misinformation when we had our original one with engineering. And so we came back and, and fought, because we had approval on our plans, but then the standards were never really presented to us.
And what, do you remember that the date of that was?
June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, I think.
Thank you, yes. I appreciate that.
I read it.
Two thousand fifteen, okay. And then the other one was just recently in February. All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Mine's not for the appellant.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Michelle. And at this point, we should hear from the applicant. And you also, you also have ten minutes, and you can split it up any way you want, and so on.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council Members, Staff. My name is Javier Chavarria with JC Engineering, and I happen to also be the engineer that prepared the plans and the design when the original house was built. We started the process in nineteen ninety-eight. And I think I can explain very easily and clearly what the process was. At the time, 674 was an empty lot, and the street extended up to 676. Right at the end of 676, there was no further street, there was no fire truck turnaround, and the grade of the street started going slightly down. In order to build the new house, we had to take the road from 676 and extend it further. We have to also create a fire truck-
You're saying 676, there is no 676. Oh, you're right, 676.
There is. Yes, 676 is one south of 674. So we extended the road, we also put a new fire truck turnaround, and because of the grades, we couldn't handle drainage any other way but installing a complete new drainage system. We had a very extensive geotechnical and geological analysis, and both of the professionals said, the only way that this can work, if we intercept all the drainage that is coming from the top, you install a large catch basin, and all the drainage must go to the city system. In addition to that, the gully needed to be protected with riprap. So, the gully was protected with riprap. Over seven hundred linear feet of twenty-four inch diameter pipe was installed from the location just beyond the fire truck turnaround, all the way down to the portion where the next city storm drain inlet was. A hundred and twenty feet of a street were built, and a hammerhead for emergency vehicles. At the very beginning of the process, there was a condition of approval that said improvement needs to be done towards the entire frontage of the property. At the time, we said, we have done a lot, more than is really necessary here, well, not necessary, but more than it was originally planned. And it was agreed at the time that the fire truck turnaround was a really good benefit, not just for the house, but for the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. As before, there was no way for a truck to come in there and have the ability to turn around. So, back in the nineties, it was up, the road was to 676. 674 was built, and that road was extended. So now 650 is building, or, or they built, so they extended the small portion of the road that was needed to bring from the fire truck turnaround to their property. The drainage conditions were not changed, they actually did improvements on the street, on the property, they collected more drainage that was further up the hill, and they tapped onto the storm drain that was initially installed back in two thousand. So therefore, I understand what City Attorney says, that there is no buybacks, there is no agreement for that, and we respect that, and we understand that. But if there were to be considered that possibility, then there should be a buyback also for all the improvements that were done. So, that is the position on that end. Regarding the drainage, we have now not only a geotechnical engineer, but also a geologist, and in addition to that, we have a peer reviewer that the city imposed on the project. We have done a very comprehensive analysis of the area, the proposed driveway and the proposed parking area, they are going to have a complete drainage system that is going to intercept any water that will fall on the driveway, it will be collected onto a solid pipe and discharged onto the main storm drain system. We have submitted hydrology and hydraulic calculations to show that the amount of water that is collected by this driveway is not going to create any detrimental effect onto the existing drainage system. There is no water from these improvements that are going to be directed towards the downhill portion of the property. To address the location of the driveway, as you drive and as you walked in the area, it may appear as there is a hole there and that there is nowhere else to go. The location of the driveway is actually further down where there is an actual leveled area. There will be proper grading, there will be proper retaining walls installed there, there will be a sidewalk built adjacent to that existing road, and there will be tier, a small retaining wall system in front of the proposed building, to buttress and create a safe environment, not only for the family that is occupying, or that will be occupying the house, but also for any member of the public that wishes to walk on that sidewalk. So in our opinion, and, and when I say in our opinion, I mean in my professional opinion, I believe that we have done a good and comprehensive design for the site, but it will be scrutinized, reviewed, and approved by Public Works and by the peer reviewers designated by the city. So I think we have a team of good professionals that will review our work to ensure the safety and the good performance of the site as designed.
Thank you, Javier. Any questions from council? Yes.
You had mentioned there's going to be the big pipe from the, if I understood you correctly, from the driveway that's going to be built to the city's storm system, correct?
Correct.
Now, the, I, it was indicated to me that the driveway is going to be at the very, like, border of the properties. Like the 650's fence is here and the driveway is right here.
Yes.
Now, are you saying that the driveway is going to be lower than that?
The driveway will be lower than that section and it will have a collection system that will drain further down to the location of the main inlet that was, that was put back in 2002. That inlet has an elevation of approximately six feet lower than the location of the, of the proposed path and parking area. So there is plenty of fall for water to fall onto a safe storm drain system without impacting 650, which is the uphill property.
So, in addition to the permeable concrete, or asphalt, whatever it is, you're going to have like a drain there that's going to collect the water and move it further down?
Absolutely.
Now, you're saying 674, when you're going up the public right-of-way to 650, there's like a lot of gullies from water runoff on the right-hand side and on the left-hand side of the road. Now, are you saying that 674 put those in or is like 674's drainage mostly underground now?
All of the drainage of 674 is underground coming onto the public storm drain system. Only the whip holes from the small retaining walls on the back drain towards the back and towards the gully that I was, it was actually protected with over 2,000 tons of riprap.
And where's the catch basin at?
Catch basin is immediately behind the fire truck turnaround. There is kind of a round structure, if you walk in there, there is a round basin like that. And that's the one that was originally installed and that's the one where the drainage of 650 is draining into.
Okay, now, the sidewalk you're speaking of is going to be on the west side of the public right-of-way, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that tree is going to be cut down?
The tree will be...
The big cypress?
Correct. A safe walking area, a sidewalk that meets the city standards will be constructed and properly protected and buttressed on the left side.
Any other questions? Sue.
I have, well, I don't know if it's for the developer or so much for staff. So, page 107, it says, "Potential catastrophic geotechnical hazards must be analyzed on the basis of passing a minimum of 100-year event." So are they talking about the catch basin there or are they talking about the hill in general or what are they?
No. When, when the addition was initially proposed, there was a geological concern, right? Across the hill, even though it's not our property, there are some, there are some sign of erosion. So the geotechnical engineer, the peer reviewer from the city, raised the concern and say, "What happens if that area up there were to fail?" Therefore, we had to prepare a geological assessment of the area and come up with a plan to prevent any damage to the structures or to the occupants if there were to be some failure of the slope that is beyond both of our properties. The area was analyzed, geologists provided enough information about the geologic formation of the area to the geotechnical engineer and he, they have given us recommendation for deep drill pier foundation system and proper drainage system of the area to prevent such a condition to occur.
So that's a new system? Not one you've already described?
No. No, the drainage system stays there. The drainage system is there. What we are going to do is, on the addition that is being proposed, there are some retaining walls that are built in front that will act as a buttressing system.
No other questions? Thank you. And at this time, I have one yellow card. Sarah Carrington. And we'll listen to her speak.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I reside at 652 Alta Vista, which is directly below the property that we're discussing this evening. And in the past, there was a tremendous amount of water that came off that hill. And when the development was done at 650 Corona, whatever the drainage system that they put in eliminated most of the drainage that came to the back of, the back north side of our house. Currently, there is still drainage that comes off that hill. In fact, at the very cul-de-sac end of Alta Vista, a significant mudslide has occurred there over the last two winters and the owner above has put some sandbags and logs and various other things there. My concern is, well, one, that that is going to give way in another big storm, but the same thing is going to happen back with the development of 674. I have, I think this evening heard a lot of information that wasn't available to me previously and that's heartening to hear. One of the things that does concern me though is that the, if I understood correctly, they're taking the brush off the hillside. And I don't know if you can confirm that for me? No? The brush is remaining? Because that seems to be a big problem in that area. As you remove the ground cover and the trees, we end up with additional mudslides in that area. So, I think when I read the initial reports, the, I didn't realize or know that they were planning to put a complete drainage system in around the parking area and if that's going to happen. I do have a question though, how is it going to fall into, I mean, the, the parking spaces are below where the house is going to be. Is there some kind of pumping system that's going to?
It's all gravity.
It's all gravity? I don't have the engineering background to understand that, but I guess I want the assurance that I will not experience mudslides and loss of that hill and any additional water flowing onto the property. And if the city can assure me of that, that's terrific. But I guess I'd also like to know what recourse I have if and when something does happen. I don't want to find myself in the same position as Michelle Garcia where I don't know what the format will be if we do in fact. Is that something that someone can answer for me tonight or?
Possibly.
Possibly, okay. Like where do I go? Where do I go and who do I go to?
Just, just stay tuned a little bit.
Okay.
I have a question for her.
Oh, and Sue has a question for you?
I was wondering, how did you find out about this development happening?
We, I did receive a notice on it earlier, but I was in the process of moving from another home and so I missed the planning commission hearing.
So you received a notice at your home?
I did, yes.
Okay, so that was one of my questions. Are the people on Alta Vista, did they get notification? Okay, good.
Along that same vein, are you a, do you own the property?
My daughter owns the property, but I reside there with her.
Okay, just checking, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's it. And we'll, we'll try to get your questions answered.
Okay, thank you so much.
The reason I asked that question was just, just to make sure that the homeowners were actually alerted as well in case there were renters, so, thanks.
So, I believe there were two questions raised and one of them, Javier, yes. Will you briefly walk through again how the, the drainage from the new parking area up near the boundary between 674 and 650 drains downhill to the drainage basin?
Absolutely. The proposed parking path is a little lower than the street immediately in front. We don't want to raise that level because it's putting unnecessary field and raising the height of the retaining walls, which could be eventually detrimental to the stability of the hillside. Fortunately, the location of that flatter area of the lot is a little higher than the location of the storm drain. So we are able to...
The storm drain is, is the catch basin that you've been referring to that's down near the hammerhead?
That is by the fire truck turnaround. So therefore, even though that parking area is lower than the road immediately in front, we will put a drain channel that will collect all the surface and subsurface water from the parking area, put it into a solid pipe, and that pipe will come on a trench and be connected to the catch basin system.
And that'll be underground?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so I have a question, I think, for the city attorney, but maybe somebody else. And that is to Sarah Carrington's question about what sort of recourse will she have if, you know, some kind of bad thing happens to her on her property downhill from all of this?
Well, one of the things that we try to assure in these conditions of approval and why we have, not only our, you know, Public Works and engineering staff review the plans, but we also have peer review, to assure that any issues related to drainage and sliding are addressed. That's number one. Number two, if something were to happen, there, there wouldn't be any recourse against the city because the city has immunity when it is making decisions based on discretionary permit approvals. Number two, the, any property owner has the potential remedy of, you know, determining what is the cause of that slide and, and, you know, seeking a remedy against, if there's a property owner, a neighboring property owner that's at fault, there are, you know, numerous land subsidence cases that, that are between neighboring property owners to address sliding.
Okay, thank you.
And through the, through the chair, or through the mayor, excuse me. I just wanted to offer that we do have with us Ted Sayers, who's our consulting geotechnical expert, and he peer reviewed these plans as well, if there's any questions for him.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Javier, okay, I'm looking at the, if I remember correctly, you said that there's going to be a pipe, a drain pipe from the, from the parking lot, parking space to the catch basin, right? Now, the catch basin's underground?
It's, it's about six feet deep.
Underground.
It has an inlet, a surface inlet, and it's about six feet deep.
Okay.
And that's the point of discharge onto the main line.
But now, has it changed? Because I'm looking at the attachment that we, it was an email you sent March 23rd to Monty and it shows a trench drain and not a underground pipe.
The trench drain will collect the, the surface flow of the parking area. And that trench drain is collected by a solid pipe which will carry the water away. If you like, I can make a quick little sketch in there that may help clarify?
Yeah, that's okay with, that's okay with the chair?
Sure.
By trench, don't you mean it's just a big gully? Is that, that's a trench, correct?
So this, this is the property. This is the road. That's the hammerhead. This is the trench. This drainage is connected to a pipe that goes all the way down there.
That's the storm system?
Correct. So the new driveway comes here onto 650 and our proposed driveway is going to come right here and come to a parking area. So this parking area is lower than this street.
Right.
So we are putting right here a shallow drain that all the water will flow from here and collect into that section. At the end of that drain, actually the drain is extended to the front of the street, there will be a collection point and a pipe that will drain onto the main storm drain system. So no surface water from this area will go beyond that trench. So, and when I said a trench drain, those are the drains that's going to have this shape in here with a grate here. Surface water will drain into this and whatever water percolates in here, we put a subsurface system of perforated pipes connected into this one. So surface goes here, subsurface collected by perforated pipe into the trench drain and this one goes out onto the main storm drain system.
Now, the, the asphalt that collects the water, permeable?
Permeable.
Permeable, right. That's what's going to collect the, the pipe that has the...
The surface. The surface was, here are the pavers.
Okay.
So these are pavers on top.
Okay, so that's not just dispersed in the ground, that's actually going into the perforated pipe?
Correct.
Okay, but my concern was with the trench, you are having a grate on top of it to, so that it doesn't get debris from trees and dirt, whatever.
Yeah, those are pre-manufactured channels that have a grate on top. And, I mean, they're accessible for cleaning, they're very efficient, they're, they're used very commonly throughout.
Pardon me?
You can even put a clean out at the end in order for them to flush it out, yeah, unnecessarily, because that's, that's the way the system is designed.
Now, how big is that trench drain going into the pipe? And how big is the pipe from the catch basin going to the street catch basin?
The trench is only 12 inches wide and is approximately 16 to 24 inches deep. And the pipe that collects that drain is a four-inch solid line that goes onto the system. The area that is being collected is very small and the four-inch pipe is plenty big to collect that amount of water.
Four, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but four inches is adequate?
For that area, yes.
Okay.
Sue, do you agree?
What was my question? So I did see a huge pipe. You said the pipe you were talking about was pretty wide. Was that 20 inches? Is that...
The existing pipe is 24 inches.
So I don't think it has anything to do with you, but there was in the area a pipe that was just coming out to the road. Was staff aware of this? And so I was concerned about that. It's a huge pipe coming out of the dirt onto a road. I actually took a picture of it, but I didn't take, make a copy.
Coming from the property across the street.
Yeah, I think it was actually, because I was, I had turned around and it was going down.
Correct. There was an old pipe coming from that upper portion of the street, but that's something that had never before been addressed because there was no improvements on that section and that's why that catch basin was made on that round shape to collect any possible water coming there. I believe that with the construction of the new road that 650 made, that issue has been addressed.
Okay. Because it looked pretty formidable of water was coming out of the sides of that, so. So my other question for the city is, how do, so these things are for the owner into perpetuity. How does the city control monitoring things into perpetuity? How do we, how do we make sure we're paying attention to all these things? Whose responsibility is it to always be checking on those things to make sure they're operating properly? Is, is that the owner does that? Do they have to turn in a report that they've checked it and everything's functioning? Or how do we, how do we do this?
That is the owner's responsibility.
But how does the city make sure the owner is, you know, doing what they're supposed to do? Especially if you have another owner somewhere down the line.
So, we do obviously inspect construction and then afterwards, years later, if we get complaints, we'll, we can go out and inspect again.
So that's, that's pretty much how we, how we do it? We don't have regular inspections, so. So just looking at the terrain there from the Alta Vista area in particular is a little bit frightening.
Deirdre Martin?
It, it seems to me that... It, it seems to me that everything that went before Planning Commission, you know, had its due diligence. And my question is primarily about process, and Michelle, if, if what Michelle is saying, I, I think if I'm interpreting this correctly, the night of the study session, and I'm not sure if it, if there was, if it was a study session, there's no decisions to be made, right? So then the next Planning Commission is when the adjustments were made, the, the conditional approvals, is that correct? Because it's, I think what I heard was at the study session, study sessions just kind of happen like that, right? There's a lot of talk, lot of talk, lot of talk, but then the, the, the actual decisions aren't made until a Planning Commission meeting, at which time there are decisions to be made. So, so, so if the, if, if your issues weren't addressed at study session, they were addressed at Planning Commission, all those conditional approvals, were they decided that night?
So I believe this had, this had one hearing, so there wasn't a study session for this item.
Okay.
So 650 had one or two hearings associated with it. There was a hearing in 99 for this project, the original house, and then there was the hearing in February. While I appreciate that Ms. Garcia may feel like not all of her issues were resolved that night, at least two of them are already conditions of approval that the Planning Commission approved. And, you know, that, that is the nature of the public hearings, applicants get up, they make statements, and, you know, sometimes there's a robust discussion about some of the questions that come up, and some, sometimes there are not.
Okay, and so, but at, at that, that, that final meeting, though, these conditions were, were all voted on and placed, and so we knew about all that before tonight, or before Wednesday when this was-
Yes, to, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but all of the conditions of approval that you see tonight were placed on the project approval at the Planning Commission hearing. Nothing changed from the Planning Commission hearing-
Okay.
-to the appeal hearing tonight.
Okay, I just want to make sure I interpreted that correctly, because I feel like I heard, what I heard was different.
There's one additional condition to, I guess, bolster the requirement that the drainage will be double-checked again during plan check.
Okay, great. Can we ask, can we let Michelle have a say for a second?
Yeah.
Is that okay? So, literally, if, if, if those conditions of approval were in place, nobody actually said they were. And when we asked about sidewalks, nothing was addressed. I know this, I left here extremely upset. I paid $350 to come back here. If I knew that sidewalks were gonna be put in, and if somebody actually talked about the drainage and said, and Javier drew for you, nobody said, you know what, let us show you what we're gonna do. Nobody. But the, the applicant before, three hours, we sat here and listened to safety, sidewalk, speeding on fastler, to have that postponed.
Right, okay.
I wouldn't have paid $350 if I felt confident, because we don't want to stop this project. We know what it's like. It took us almost five years from start to finish to build our house. We're not the people that want to stop this. We just want to make sure that the infrastructure we put in isn't gonna be, in any way, the integrity of it be at risk. You're taking out a heritage tree, that's a slide area, what's it gonna do to the road? We just want to know that all the hard work we put in isn't going to be affected. We want to know that when we come home, we're not gonna be troubled with trucks in the roadway, there's, that roadway was supposed to have, I mean, we went into great detail about how that is a no parking zone. The city was supposed to paint it red, it has never been painted red. How are they gonna access to build this house? Are they coming up from the bottom? If they come up from the bottom, that's our property. Nobody's talked to us about that. Are we gonna come home one day and find all this equipment down below? So we just feel like we're not getting any information. And at the Planning Commission meeting on February 5th, we were told that we should try and work with our neighbors on this. These are not decisions that we get to work with our neighbors on. I could tell them I want a sidewalk, and they could tell me, no, we're not putting in a sidewalk, that costs too much money, this is already costing us too much money. How are we supposed to work with our neighbors on this? It's, it's on the video. I would have never spent $350 to come in here to have somebody to say, we told you we were gonna do all this?
Right.
And that's, it's kind of insulting.
Okay, well, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
So, so just to kind of tack on to that, I want to apologize on behalf of the city if, if, you know, you felt slighted in any way. It, I, I think you're right, you know, you're not trying to stop anything, I feel for you, and I feel for your neighbors too, and I hope that, in the end, that there's a good neighborly relationship, because, you know, we all just hopefully want to get along. But I, I do thank the Planning Commission for all their diligence, and, and Director Wormeister too, for putting in these conditions as well. And so I think unfortunately, you have to work through the city on this one, for these, with these conditions. And I, I'm, you know, I think you did a good job, and I don't wanna, I, I have a tendency to lean towards the Planning Commission's decisions, and I hope that in the end that you can all get along. I, I do feel bad about the buyback stuff, too, and, I don't know, this is kind of out there, but if there's any way that maybe we can reimburse the $350 for the appeal, is that something? I don't know if that's even something that we could do, but it's, that's a thought.
Not tonight.
Anyway, that's, that's all I have to say.
Mike O'Neil?
I just, I would just like to add that I do think, being it is a public right-of-way, and I would assume if somebody trips or falls there, it would be the city's dime, that there should be a street light on that section of the road. And I know that's in, that's in the staff report for addition, an addition to the, to the motion.
Right, the, the recommended language, if that's the pleasure of the council, is on page 90, or packet page 96.
Right.
And just to delve into that a little further, where should that street light be? I mean-
I'd leave that up to the city engineer.
Yeah.
I think-
One, one thing that, that I would say is try to make sure that it doesn't shine in anybody's window.
Do we have a spare one of Palmetto, that we used on Palmetto? Okay, so I would like to, I would like that condition. I'd also like to ask Commissioner Niblin, does he have any input he would like to say? Because having been in that position before, you would like to say something.
Thank you, and I, I think it, you know, I do want to sort of state, you know, I was actually chairing the meeting that night, I believe, so, and, and I do think it's fair to note that we had come off of probably a two and a half or three hour item, so I think in comparison to the item we just, we had completed, the proceedings may have seemed somewhat truncated when we were talking about this particular item, but I do think on behalf of the commission that these matters were given consideration. It is true, as, as the planning director noted, that some, some items receive more commentary from commissioners than other items. Certainly, at least a couple of the concerns that were raised were addressed by commissioners. I, I don't think it's the case that every item that was addressed on appeal tonight was, was addressed at length, or maybe at all, by the commissioners, but that isn't to say the commissioners weren't aware of the various matters that were in the packet. I know that we look at these, these, these matters, and we familiarize ourselves with the conditions of approval. So I felt that we had good information in terms of the decision we made. I, I do understand, however, how the appellant could feel that maybe the matter didn't receive as much attention as other matters had, but I think on the totality of it, the, the concerns were looked at and that the commission acted properly under the, under the circumstances.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would like to, is there a condition here that if there is damage to the street from the, the construction vehicles, that the applicant would reimburse the city or fix it? I mean, it's heavy trucks.
It's a standard engineering requirement, as we do the plan check, that those notes are indicated there, that any damage to the existing infrastructure be addressed prior to the final of the project.
Okay, and it looks to me, we are, we have addressed the dirt mounds that were dumped on the property, and the right-of-way would not be kept clear, construction vehicles, equipment, debris, that seems to be, have been addressed also. Unfortunately, I don't think we can address the right-of-way reimbursement. I guess that's a horse that's left the barn, and we can't address that. So I would like to add the street light condition of approval, and then make a motion unless somebody else has comments.
A little more discussion yet.
Okay.
Sue DeGree?
Well, I had three things. One was the light. I, I do, like I mentioned the first time, I do think that's a safety issue. I certainly sympathize with your point as, as light shining into people's faces. That's a narrow, it's gonna be a dark and narrow area. The other thing is, I think, planning staff and commission did a good job. I have to say, I really did like this, however, that was very enlightening. But I think as far as the, I would assume that, so direction from the city attorney, it would be within our prerogative at some point, if not tonight, to, to request that our, our processes for the public to be engaged may be reviewed. So they mentioned videos and discussions, so I think at some point, somewhere, we, we can always evaluate how our policy is in engaging the public on serious things like this, so that public doesn't come away with the assumption that things are gonna be cared for or answered and followed through, and then, and then they're not. So that's one reason I also brought up, it's like, how does the city monitor things? So we don't really monitor things, we wait for complaints. So I think that that sort of information needs to be clear to people, but it needs to be clear to us. I mean, what is our process for protecting the public to understanding the policies? And I'm not saying what we did was, was wrong, I'm just saying that a member of the public was assuming one thing, and we were going merrily along another standard way, so maybe we need to look at how we communicate those things. I, I think that's important.
Anything else? Okay, Mike, motion?
May I make a motion that the proposed action moved to deny the appeal upheld Planning Commission approval of use permit, UP-085-17, site development permit PSD-81917, and variance PV-51917, and find the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A to the resolution, incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference, and applicant shall incorporate a street light per City Standard 112 at the southeast corner of the emergency vehicle turnaround, or at a location satisfactory to the city engineer.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, please vote.
I want you to vote.
Well, Sue's, Sue's exempt.
That's right, I'm sorry.
And that passes four to zero. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Do you want to grab Sue?
Yeah.
Mike, do you want to grab Sue?
Tina's gonna get her.
Thank you, Tina.
Yeah.
I'm always counting them up there. Who's there? Your commission staff?
You voted already?
No, we're done now.
Okay. Okay, the final, final item of the evening for consideration is number eight, appointments to the Beautification Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, and the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission. Can we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The city has recruited applicants for the Beautification Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, and Park Speeches and Recreation Commission to fill vacancies due to expiring terms on the Beautification Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission, and one resignation on the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission. These opportunities were published in the Pacifica Tribune, the city website, and Next Door. The city received six applications for the Beautification Advisory Committee, five applications for the Planning Commission, and three applications for the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission. Interviews were conducted by the city council on March 28th. The list of applicants for each committee and commission is attached. The selection process, staff recommends that council appoint two applicants for the expired terms on the Beautification Advisory Committee, two applicants for the expired terms on the Planning Commission, and one applicant for the vacancy on the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission, which term expires in May of 2020. In order to facilitate reaching a consensus, staff will circulate to all council members the list of all applicants for each of the committees and commissions. Staff will then ask each council member to place check marks next to the names they would nominate for appointment to the Beautification Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, and the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission. After collecting the list from the council members, staff will then tabulate the number of nominations for each applicant and report those securing the highest number of nominations. Upon receiving the report from staff, council will then make formal motion to appoint the selected applicants to the Beautification Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, and the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission.
Okay.
And if we could just take one at a time, and you have your list up there in front of you.
Okay.
So we'll do Beautification Advisory first, we'll just go in the order of the staff report.
Beautification.
Not the whole day, no. I'm actually leaving for Oregon, so I'm gonna be at the Progress on Saturday.
We'll have to save the trip to Oregon.
It's happening Sunday.
I got an email, they wanted a resolution for Bill Hopper, who's retiring after, I don't know, something like 30 or 40 years with the Little League, and they wanted a resolution, so I got the resolution, John signed it, and the event is like one to five.
Yeah.
At Progress, I don't want to commit to it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Traffic and stuff. John was gonna be here, but he can't do it.
If I'm here, I'll find out for you, I have to check on my flight.
Well, they're gonna give her, you just forget it, she was on paper, but I have to.
So we do have a tie vote for three of the applicants.
Okay.
So if you want to vote again, we do have a tie for three of the applicants. So I can pass these back, and you can-
So do you want to tell us which three they are?
So-
I mean, I think that's really-
Yes. John Edwards, James Brudinski, and Orin Rubenstein.
Okay.
So will it help to have these back and make a second mark?
So do we all vote for, I'm confused about what the next step is.
So, Ms., the city attorney, we have a tie on three of the applicants.
Well, it's up, it's up to the council, so this, this is not, this is just for your information. This is nothing. So now, now the council can decide how it wants to deal with, you know, you have three applicants with the same amount of initial straw votes, so now you need to have a discussion amongst the five of you as to, either somebody can make a motion to appoint?
Let's have the forms back again, and this time, you know, write a number two next to the, each individual that you're voting for, and-
How's that gonna be rated?
I'm, so, we're gonna vote for one of the three, Edwards, Brudinski, or, well, two of the three, Edwards, Brudinski, or Rubenstein?
Can we all just write on a piece of paper right now?
No, I, I, no, the concern is you can't have secret ballots, right? So this was an attempt to see if you could narrow the field. So this was an attempt to see if you could narrow the field. So... So now, you're going to need to have a deliberation, or someone could just make a motion without a deliberation on who you would like to appoint. Or before somebody makes that motion, you can have a deliberation on, the council as a body now needs to narrow down the choices.
I don't see how another straw vote is not indicated.
Well, so are you...
John, I'll just make a motion for, let me get the names, for John Edwards and James Brzezinski. You just said those were both, she just said make a motion.
Well, you have the one person who has received three nominations.
Oh, you said there was three ties.
And you have three people who received the same amount.
Oh.
Oh, so who's in?
Make that clear.
So of John Edwards, James Brzezinski, and Orin Rubenstein, you will need to choose one.
Okay, so who got the three?
Patricia Huntalas.
So you should make a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Patricia Huntalas to the beautification advisory committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's vote on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that part.
Neither did I.
I thought we had, okay.
Someone didn't vote.
Okay, and that passes 5 to 0. All right. Now...
What's next?
Now we have three people that have two votes each, right?
Correct.
For the other position. John Edwards, James Brzezinski, and Orin Rubenstein. And I was going to propose that...
Yes, now you could do another straw poll with, now I understand.
Okay, so just send those forms back, and we'll use a different thing.
We're only going to vote for one, though.
Yeah.
We're only going to vote for one.
They vote for one, and perhaps you could use the number 2 next to their name for your next choice.
John Edwards, James Brzezinski, and Orin Rubenstein, is that right?
That's right.
Is one of us, or two of us didn't vote for?
Let's see.
I didn't understand, that's what she was saying.
Too hard on my brain?
She has to figure out how to deal with this.
We're not sure what we're going next.
No, there's, oh, yes, right, right. Although... Yeah. They didn't, these two didn't seriously...
And so the second person receiving the most nominations is John Edwards.
Okay. Can I have a motion on that?
I make a motion to appoint John Edwards to the beautification advisory committee.
Second.
Okay, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0, so we have Patricia Huntalas and John Edwards are the two beautification advisory committee appointees. Next, we'll try for the planning commission, is that right?
Yes.
We've got two for that.
Thank you.
I'll keep hold on because it's a private information.
I know afterwards, it comes out, you know.
Well, it's public information, that's why our names are on there, so like, they are allowed to know.
Okay, so we have Thomas Clifford receiving the most nominations. And again, we have a tie between Remy Tan and Orin Rubenstein.
Okay.
I move that we accept Tom Clifford on the planning commission.
Second.
All right, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0.
So the other, the other, there was a tie between?
Remy Tan and Orin Rubenstein.
So can we have a discussion real quick?
Sure.
From what I recall, Orin was more interested in beautification. He, do you recall that from the interviews?
I do, too, yes.
I clearly recall him wanting to be on beautification, and even on our packets, it said, he added himself to it, and I did ask him that question, which one do you prefer? But that's, I did not vote for Remy Tan, so...
He also applied for the position, so he had a preference.
He had a preference for beautification, I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? No, okay.
Just number 2 again?
Yeah, yeah, number 2.
Thank you. So Orin Rubenstein received the most nominations for this round.
Okay.
I make a motion that we appoint Orin Rubenstein to the planning commission?
Second.
Okay, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. So the two new, well, the two planning commissioners appointed are...
I was going to say, we're supposed to have a public hearing before we vote, aren't we?
There are no, there are no yellow cards. The two planning commissioners, the two people appointed to the planning commission are Thomas Clifford and Orin Rubenstein. And now for the parks, beaches, and rec.
Can I just make a statement real quick?
Yeah.
I just want to let everyone know that there are always openings, we had a lot of really good applicants, so please keep applying, it doesn't mean that you weren't good.
And obviously, this was a hard decision.
And the person securing the most nominations was Eli Poblitz.
Okay.
I make a motion, we appoint Eli Poblitz to the PBNR commission?
Second.
Okay, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0, so Eli Poblitz is appointed to the parks, beaches, and recreation commission. And that concludes our meeting. We are adjourned.